I'd like to call this meeting order. We did have security, we have to assess it. Sound of the light.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Elder, where is it? Mr. Hauser?
Here.
Mr. Vazir?
Here.
Mrs. Mayes?
Here.
Mr. Mohler?
Here.
Mr. Music?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Dr. Zorge?
Dr. Lott?
Here.
During the visitors, part one, anybody can speak on anything on the agenda. If they're going to do that, come forward, say your name and your address. All right. I'll move for the adoption of resolution number 91, approval minutes. Any questions? Doctor. Can you move in second? No one vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now pass again. So, a report?
I do report, I'm reporting.
Have a later center report tonight, communication planning. Yes, thank you. We'll begin with the students, Natalie and Samantha.
Hello.
Hi.
How is everyone tonight? Okay, this is for the elementary schools. For Lakeview Elementary School, there was a WTAU meteorologist in Carnegie Science Center visit on November 9th. And thanks to Chappity Store, who's a fourth grade teacher, the whole school was able to raise nine, raise $950 to donate to Project Buffalo. This Wednesday, Officer Phil will be presenting a safety program to the first, second, and third graders. It's with conjunction with the Lakeview Police Department. Currently, the student council is having a pajama drive for this classic reading club great bedtime story. This is where students can drop off pajamas, like new pajamas, till December 16th. And then throughout the holidays, they will be having a food drive. Then for Mountain View Elementary School, Officer Rocky gave a safety presentation program to the third grade. They will also be holding a food drive throughout the holidays, but in addition, they're having a penny more fundraiser to add even more money for, to raise money for food items. They will have cake night on November 18th and a fall craft and vendor fair on November 19th. Then for Bayberry Elementary School, they've already completed their food drive and have gave meals to 28 different families. Officer Rocky also gave a safety presentation to their third grade. And they had a Veterans Day assembly on November 9th. And all three schools will have a Coral Extravaganza on November 13th. Thank you. Okay, so for the junior high school, they, well, the junior and senior high, we have reached the end of the first quarter successfully, so. The end of the junior high, yes, the junior high and senior high, grades five through 12, they will be having their Coral Extravaganza. So, all the Coral students in grades five through 12 will come to the senior high auditorium and sing this Wednesday. And the holiday dance will be taking place on December 9th. For the senior high, on October 19th, the freshmen were able to visit several universities to get a taste of college life. The sophomores took their PSATs, the juniors took their ASVAB exams, and the seniors took their senior photo outside and participated in some leadership activities. We were, the senior high students were honored to have Dr. Kuscha, he conducted a teen dating violence assembly and talked about the death of his daughter due to teen dating violence. It was a very touching assembly. The students participated in a mock election, and the students chose Donald Trump as who they thought would be president. The students got to see the fall play on Wednesday. During our last period, we got to see a sneak peek of the fall play. And then, they performed over the weekend. On November 10th, the teachers had an in-service day, and they attended work sites pertaining to, pertaining to their respective subjects. They built community partners for student job shadows, and they discussed the skills that didn't be successful in their respective careers. And finally, the senior high students will be collecting donations to make baskets to donation, to families in the district to have a Thanksgiving dinner. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
The enrollment report is attached. If you have any comment on that, just for time here, not there.
Four thousand strong.
Four thousand strong, right here. Okay, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Tepper, she's going to give us a curriculum on the last slide. Can we hit the lights? Thank you, darling. Oh, wow. Don't go to sleep. Okay, I'm happy to say, today, the administration as well, the teachers at the junior high school and senior high administration were able to call in and view our students participating in a fab lab, which was sponsored by Canametal. And this fab lab, or fabrication lab, will continue tomorrow and Thursday as well. And if I can see my clicker. What's the other one back on? There, oh, good, good, yeah. This opportunity for our students was actually sponsored by Canametal. Canametal had identified three school districts in the county, and fortunately, we were one of those school districts to receive the grant, as well as Kentville and Norwood. And the grant was for over, slightly over $3,000, it's approximately $1,000 each time the fab lab does come up to a location. And being that we have it here for three days, we're very fortunate to have as many of our students participate as possible. Along with the grant, our science teachers at the junior high school were able to attend professional development at Carnegie Science Center. So, three of our science teachers actually went down to the Carnegie Science Center a couple of weeks ago, and they attended a full-day workshop where they actually learned what the students would be taught, and they had the opportunity to experiment and complete the engineering challenge that our students are completing or have completed today and will continue the next two days. Our seventh grade students were the participants, and it would have been wonderful if we could have had all seventh grade students participate, but due to enrollment having to be capped at 15 students per session, the administration had to think about a creative way to identify students. So tying with our career pathway, the administration as well, along with the science teachers, actually administered a national STEM survey to all of our seventh grade students pertaining to the students' interest in careers and their interest in STEM activities. Fifteen students participated in each three-hour session, and we have an AM and a PM session for the next three days, so we will be able to have 120 of our students from the seventh grade class participate. And you are invited, if you are available, to come out to the junior high. It's in room C7, and it goes from nine to 12, and then 12 to 3. Or wait a minute, eight to 11, and then 12 to 3. So if you have an opportunity to even pop in at any time, please feel free to do so. So the activities that our students completed, as I stated earlier, it's an engineering challenge. First off, they were instructed on the use of the software called InkScape. And the reason for the InkScape software, the reason that was chosen by the Carnegie Science Center is that it is free, so our students can actually access that software at any time on any device, and they're able to design something and put it on a jump drag, and then they would be able then to either take it to Carnegie Science Center or bring it into any fab lab. And if we would have the fab lab materials, the laser cutters, they would be able to continue their project. But one of the big things that the gentleman spoke to me about today from the Science Center was they wanted to make certain that this could be utilized by all students. So if they grasp, if a student was very interested, and they felt this is definitely something that they wanted to pursue, they would have the opportunity to do that at no cost. The students designed a glider and a decal to be placed on the glider, and basically that was to brand their personal glider. They utilized laser cutters to produce the gliders and the decals, and then they had the opportunity to experiment with those gliders, to see what worked, what didn't work, how they may have to go back to the software program to redesign, and then to rethink the entire project. As I stated, the first presentation with the individuals from the Carnegie Science Center, they talked about the impact of physics on flight. So there was an instructional component prior to the instruction on the software and how to utilize the software. So the information pertaining to the physics obviously was applicable to what they were completing and creating today. Then there was obviously training on the InkScape software, and since our teachers did participate in that professional development, our teachers were accorded this, and they were able to rotate around and assist the students as well. There were also, there were three representatives from Carnegie Science Center and also a representative from Canametal. These are some of, this is one of our students today, just using the laser cutter. And what you're viewing in the photo is the actual glider being cut from the design that the student had created through the software. It's really neat. I know we've seen 3D printers, and it does take some time for the 3D printer to actually produce something. The laser cutter is very fast. So if you have a class of 15, those students can work through and be able to complete their project at a much greater speed than if it is a 3D printer.
Did you talk about the cost? The laser cutter that you see in that photo is a 40-watt laser cutter. That's a $15,000 piece of equipment. The exhaust system that connects next to it is about another $10,000.
So, if we continue, and we hope we will be continuing, to create our STEM learning centers and our STEM labs, if we would be able to purchase a laser cutter and it would remain stationary, we would not need the piece of exhaust system for the lady standing behind, if it remains stationary. The reason for that exhaust system is if it's moved and it's, has to actually be embedded into that exhaust system, whereas if it's somewhere that's permanent and it can exhaust elsewhere, we would not have to purchase that. But obviously, if you're rotating the laser cutter, you know, amongst the buildings, then you would have to purchase this as well. Here are the students actually constructing their glider. And this was, this was really neat to see. There was a lot of discussion with this, what worked, what maybe fit, what didn't fit, and how you saw a little bit of frustration along with this too, but actually excitement with the students, knowing that they had to go back to the drawing board and say, okay, why didn't this work? What do I need to do this time? And we would just like to thank Canametal for this opportunity. Again, just another great opportunity for our students to experience activities in STEM-related fields, and also being able to design and to see a product within a three-hour period, and then to utilize those critical thinking and problem-solving skills to go back to the drawing board to improve that product. So just a quick presentation, again, they'll be here on Tuesday, or excuse me, Wednesday and Thursday this week, and feel free to come out to the junior high, we'd love to see. Anybody here? Are there any questions? Thank you very much. Moving on, I will move for adoption of resolution number 92, approval of the GLSD confidence. Second. Can you move in second? Any questions? Mrs. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayes?
Yes.
Mr. Vazir?
Yes.
Mr. Mohler?
Here.
Mr. Music?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Lott?
Yes.
Can we send you a view of the yes, Mr. Mohler?
Yes.
I move for adoption of resolution number 93, to approve community foundation of West Martin County youth philanthropy program survey.
I'll just add that this is a survey, rather an innocuous survey of students at the high school, 20 random, single students. And they're asking the students what, based on their career ideas, what kind of philanthropy they might be interested in, what they would think they would get out of a philanthropic, philanthropic activity. It's, it's not a big deal.
Yes.
Can you move in second? Any questions coming? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I would like to bundle resolutions number 94 and 95. 94 being to approve the Center for Hearing and Deaf Services Incorporated contract, and 95 being to approve Dr. Ray and Melty and Associate General Service Agreement.
Can you move in second? Any questions? All in favor for adoption of number 95, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then pass again. And the next curriculum committee meeting, well, we have a meeting tonight at 6:00 PM here in the CSC, and the next meeting will be Tuesday, February 21st, 2017, here in the CSC also. And that's all I have, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Mayes. My name is Bill.
Thank you. I'd like to move for adoption of resolution number 96, the Treasurers Report, and resolution number 97, the Payment of Bills.
Second.
Can you move in second? Any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then pass again.
And I'd like to move for adoption of resolution number 98, to approve gifts, grants, and donations. A resolve that the grade was, for the school director, hereby accept $3,000 donated by the LES PTO for an elementary cultural assembly at LES.
Can you move in second? Very thankful to have you now. I'll say it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then pass again.
And I'd like to turn the rest of my portion over to Mr. Watson, who's going to explain to us the homestead/farmstead exclusion and the debt exclusion.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. We adopt this homestead/farmstead exclusion application mailing annually, but just to review it very quickly. Under Act One, schools are required to notify residents of their eligibility for homestead/farmstead exclusions. This exclusion is the means by which a property tax relief is given. It is an exclusion because it excludes a portion, excuse me, of the assessed value of the property from taxation. It's required that we do this mailing by December 30th or 1st. The county once again disagrees to handle this mailing, with the cost of 64 cents per mailing. The total cost is about $2,272, although we're mailing out 3,550 applications. So, it's a, it's a resolution we adopt annually. Any questions on that?
Can you move in second? Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The next item we have is to approve debt resolution. I'd like to introduce Mr. Tom Lynch from Lynch &amp; Lynch. He's our bond counsel. Also in attendance is Ms. Alicia Reese from Janie Montgomery. Scott is our underwriter, and Mr. Wes Hall from PFM is our financial advisor. So, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks very much, man. We have the debt resolution in front of the board, and normally, we've been out here for refundings. In this case, we're doing a funding of the first leg of the new elementary school project. And so in order to provide flexibility and get the bonds issued and closed by the end of the year, we're using a parameter method whereby the district is going to approve the bonds up to and not exceed $12 million, when in fact, the bond issue itself, we're going to issue bonds just south of 10 to take advantage of the bank-qualified issuance. So the debt resolution of the school board really authorizes accruing the debt, which is actually the bonds, through entering into the 16th supplemental lease agreement. And under that lease agreement, you would assign your lease rental payments to the authority's trustee, who then pays the bond. So it's as simple as that. And really, if I can just read the summary, it's a resolution of the district authorizing lease rental debt for purposes of funding purposes. You're going to authorize execution of the 16th supplement agreement of lease between the authority and the district as the lesssee and the guarantor. You're going to consent to the assignment of the lease rental payments under the lease agreement, and you're going to authorize all this filing of these debt documents with DCEB for approval. So that in a summary is the debt resolution, and I'd like to take up any questions that you might have on it. And following your discussions, Wes Hall just has a very short handout that he's going to go over what interest rates might look like when we actually do the sale, which will be in about two weeks, as of November 20th. After this meeting, we're going to go out with the authority, who's going to then adopt what's called a bond resolution, and they will authorize selling the bonds to Janie Montgomery Scott. And that's, that's it. So that's my summary. Any questions? I'll turn it over to Wes.
All right, hello, my name is Wes Hall. I work with Scott Public Financial Management. So what I'll be walking through tonight is the gold handout, so if you could go ahead and take that out, we'll just be walking through things real quickly here. So as you all know, Scott's attended a number of meetings over the past month or so related to the elementary school project. Tonight is just a continuation of the process and of the next step on the financing timeline. So if you could go ahead and turn page one, please. This is just a reflection of the current municipal market. What you can see by looking at the top chart, you can see the gray boxes reflect the range of yields for each year and the yield curve over the past 10 years. And you can see that red line at the top is the 10-year historic average, and that blue line is where rates are currently at. So just to give everyone a little bit of color in the market, since the election, we have seen a little bit of volatility, you know, with Trump being elected, it wasn't exactly expected. So there was a little bit of volatility, as I mentioned, with everybody getting used to his policies and whatnot moving forward, or what's expected to be his policies. And we have seen a general slight uptick in rates here over the past week or so. Things have started to settle down a little bit. So while we have seen that slight uptick, when we go, when we first initially structured the numbers and run the numbers, we were a bit conservative. So there still is, you know, the numbers in here are probably right around the current market rate for the first step. And so with that said, even with the uptick in rates, we are still well below the 10-year historic average, so while we might not be at those all-time historic lows anymore, it's still a good time to go out into the market. So flipping to the next page, page two. This just gives a general overview of what we are here for tonight. So the district is looking into a $31.2 million elementary school project, and we're going to be looking to structure the new bond as a wraparound structure, just to minimize the millage impact. And going along with that, to minimize the millage impact, we're going to utilize some capitalized interest and some cash for the second and third borrowings. And as you'll see later on tonight, on the summary page, that number is set, and we plan to basically look over the market and see what that final amount will need to be when we get closer to those next two borrowings. And then if you go and look towards the bottom of the second page there, this just goes into a little bit more detail regarding the parameters resolution. It basically summarizes what Tom just said. So page three, this is the timeline of the elementary school project. As I mentioned, Scott was here for the financing, finance committee meeting on Act 44 here a month or so ago. And then tonight is for the adoption of the parameters resolution. And then next steps from here moving forward, we're planning on pricing the first series of bonds, the first step, or the week of November 28th. We're initially targeting around the November 30th deadline, because that gives us then enough time to settle by the end of the year. And then step two and step three, we're just going to be anticipating over, you know, the next year, year and a half, basically, spring, summer, 2017, and early 2018. Page four shows just a snapshot of the district's debt portfolio. Looking at the top half, this shows the current debt service requirements, and the bottom half shows the local effort, local effort requirements, once you met out the state share. So flipping over to page five, this is a financing summary for the elementary school project. So what you can see is, if you look in column one, the blue column further to the left, this is the first step that we're planning on pricing, pricing in a couple of weeks here. It's going to be just under $10 million to maintain those bank-qualified interest rates. And what that gets you as a refresher is just a lower, lower interest rates in the five-year call feature. For steps two and steps three, as I mentioned, we're going to be looking into utilizing some capitalized interest and potentially some cash as well, just to make sure we minimize that initial millage impact, just so that we can have the final goal being a project with no impact on the district's village. So after this page, page five, page six goes into a little bit more detail related to the 2016 money borrowing. Then after that, it's just the estimated sources of uses and the actual maximum grand letters debt service schedule. So if you have any internal questions that the board may have right now.
Is there any questions? For Wes? If not, I'd like to introduce our school 40 is in attendance. They're sitting in the, a pretty handsome gentleman in the back row. We'll be moving over to the next room so that they can do their business. Thanks, Dr. Jean Leonard, for coming. Keith Visconti and Carl Walmeyer, we appreciate you guys coming out tonight.
Yeah, before, before we leave the subject of the authority, our president of the authority, Mr. Fisher, has been very ill, and he was not able to attend. I'm doing better, and I just would like that we all think of him in our thoughts and prayers. Wonderful man, he's been the president of the authority as long as I can remember. I've been doing this now for 33 years.
Are there any questions on the bond resolution?
Mrs. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayes?
Yes.
Mr. Vazir?
Yes.
Mr. Mohler?
Yes.
Mr. Music?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Lott?
Yes.
Thank you. And the members of the board, we can, so once in our home, to adjourn, elsewhere with the children, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Very nice job. Thank you for having me.
And the final committee meeting is attached to the agenda for 10 years. And the next Monday, the committee meeting will be Thursday, December 7th, the day that we live in infamy, at the Edmond Building. Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Facility Operations Committee, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I'd like to move for adoption of resolution number 101 to authorize preparation submission of plan con parts T and E. That's by school board directors hereby authorized access architecture, prepare and submit plan con parts D and E for the Greater Old Trove School District New Elementary School and Pennsylvania Department of Education.
Second. Remove the second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then pass the next question.
I'd also like to move for adoption of resolution number 102 to approve instruction manager, the Greater Old Trove School Board, school directors, hereby awards construction manual contract reforming group for a sum of $495,000. These services pertaining to construction, new elementary school.
Remove the second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
And then passes seven.
Also, just to, I'd like to just interrupt you a little. Just to be clear, we did get, we solicited six, six bids received, three. One of the six was non-compete or something, or one of them was non-comply or something, right? Not one of the three, but one of the six. Was it?
We're non-responsive. Did not respond, right?
Yes, we received, yeah, two declined, one did not respond. Okay, here we see three proposals that we interviewed.
And I think you should point out, after the initial proposal, you went back to start a reorganization of chief.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Also, our facility operations committee meeting minutes are attached. And our next facility operations planning committee meeting will be December 8th at 3:30 p.m. We have a very important agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. So the adoption of resolution 103 to the sports sports. What? Second. Remove the second. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to point out that ball sports recognition night will be this Thursday on the forum at 7:00. And then our next athletic committee meeting will be this Monday at 6:00. For community relations, next Greater Old Trove School District Arts and Arts Commission meeting will be Thursday, this Thursday, November 17th, 4:30 at the Edmond Building. The most prominent meeting will commence. The summary of the WAU board meeting from October 25th is attached. And the next WAU committee meeting will be Thursday, the 22nd at 7:00 p.m. at WAU. Mrs. Mayes, EWCTC.
Thank you. The EWCTC, a member of the meeting list for October, our test your agenda. On Thursday, the EWCTC National Technical Honor Society Adoptions will be held at the EWCTC building. And next, the EWCTC Joe Partnering Committee, which will be reorganization, will be on Wednesday, December 7th at 5:45 at the EWCTC building.
And we urge members of the board to attend that at 7:00. And we want to do this with that meeting.
The food's good.
We got a good food.
I think you're getting pretty good attention though.
We did. Yeah, we did. We did.
Not that we're going to. Food. That's a bad word. That's very good.
I guess that's good.
That's very good.
Kay, we always give Kay the idea to get some riches as the joint area board president.
Good policy, Mrs. Elder. Thank you. I'd like to move for adoption of resolution number 104 to approve board policy number 247 regarding amazing, number 609 regarding investment of district funds, and number 625, a new policy regarding procurement costs. And move the second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then pass the next question.
And I'd also like to point out that at your place this evening, you have a copy of, I don't know, the PSBA insurance trust regarding travel insurance policy, which is available to all school board members when they attend any kind of school board function of their range of travel within their district. And for a premium, it's also available for other travel that they may have.
Thank you. Technology.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I'm very glad we are having a technology meeting on Tuesday, September 20th here at CSC at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 105, which is the approval of the resignations as listed.
Second. Is there any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then pass the next question.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 106, which is the approval of the professional personnel substitute teachers that are.
Remove the second. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then pass the next question.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 107, which is the approval of the support personnel, one substitute custodian, Alfred Correlli.
Second.
Remove the second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then pass the next question.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 108, which is the approval of a non-contractual professional employee retirement incentive. And I would note that this is the same retirement incentive that had been offered during the 2015-16 school year by the school board. If you note the bold lettering, this is wholly contingent upon the district receiving at least 10 letters of resignation for retirement purposes from eligible professional employees at the Greater Old Trove School District Administration Office no later than the close of business on March 31st, 2017. In the event that less than 10 individuals submit letters of resignation for retirement purposes, this non-contractual professional employee retirement incentive offering will be withdrawn. The remainder of the retirement incentive is the language that was in the retirement incentive last year. I just wanted to note the number of 10 and the date that will need to have those letters turned in.
Remove the second. Remove the second. Any questions?
I think you should be said that the finance committee has considered this at life and are willing to do this again and recommend it to the board members.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then passes seven.
And I would note the items of other business. The students referenced several of the events that are coming up, notably the World Travaganza tomorrow evening, the Breakfast of Champions for the second month this year, November is Thursday. There's a breakfast with Santa that is sponsored here at the Center for Student Creativity on Saturday morning, December 30th. We'd like to bring a young child. The holiday concerts are listed there, as well as the elementary and junior high school. And the board meetings, our reorganization meeting for December will be held at 7:00 p.m. Tuesday, December 6th here, as well as our regular board meeting will be Tuesday, December 20th. As Mrs. Alls have noted, the school board photograph will be taken on the night of the reorganization meeting. So we will be scheduling that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Period of this year's part two, where anybody can speak to anything all for all getting this. And resolution, I am listening to the resolution 109 for the better. Second. Remove the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?